May fifteenth, April fifteenth, I'm sorry. April fifteenth, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Our invocation is going to be given by Commissioner Charles Evans. And they will, the invocation will be followed by the Souls children. Who even though they're seven years old, I've been following them for about seven and a half years. So Commissioner Evans?
Madam Chair, if you would allow me just a moment to talk about these young people here that I'm so glad and honored to do this and that they're here. The Souls Quadruplets are first graders in the Spanish-English Dual Emerson Program at Harney Primary School. Even though they live in Harney County, they are the children of Cumberland County Public Information Specialist John Souls and his wife Vanessa Souls. The children turned seven on March 7th. We have Megan Souls, who loves animals, dance, and has displayed artistic talent. Her chalk drawing of an owl was selected for display in a Harney County Schools Art Show and in a Dunn Junior Women's Club Art Show in the historic Howard House. Could Megan stand?
Stand up Megan. Thank you.
Farrah Souls, could you stand, young lady? Farrah's a strong-willed and determined, but also lighthearted. She is the comedian of the family and enjoys making her siblings and her parents laugh with her voices and impressions of people she knows. Thank you. Moises Souls, would you stand please? He loves corvettes and physical activity. He is very competitive and doesn't like to lose. I feel you. He enjoyed playing Little League Soccer the past two summers. Thank you for standing. Elisa Ellis?
Elias.
Elias, I knew I was gonna do it. Elias Souls, would you stand?
I stand.
Okay. Stand some more. Thank you, sir. He loves Batman and Minecraft and his favorite activity is reading. He loves books and trips to the library and is also a strong climber at the playground or in the trees in the yard. So after I do the invocation, they will bless us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you bow with me, please? Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be assembled here today to handle the business of Cumberland County and the citizens that we serve. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your peace and your love. And please guide us and lead us in a manner that will be acceptable in your sight. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I'm ready for the picture. Wait for the picture, that's right. That's a man after my own heart, look at him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have the FTCC Federal Technical Community College President, Dr. Larry Keane, to come forward, and he is accompanied, I don't know, both of you are coming at once, by Dr. Linwood Powell, who is Vice Chair of Board. And I had the pleasure of serving with both of these gentlemen when I was a member of the State Board of Community Colleges. Welcome.
Chairman, Chairman Council, thank you so much. It's my great honor to be accompanied by Dr. Powell tonight to inform our County Board of Commissioners of the installation today of Commissioner Glenn Adams as an honorary trustee of Federal Technical Community College. I don't think he really knew about this, it was kind of a surprise to him, but I'll tell you what, that's the highest honor we have. And it's one of those things in which we go out and we evaluate, our board does, they make nominations and then they discuss the merits of people and what they do and the contributions they've made to our community college and its people. And Mr. Adams, you were just roundly selected as the person to represent us this year. As I was telling you earlier, this is not done every year. This is not an automatic that goes year to year, they really do, our board really does take the time to evaluate this. We're glad to say that Dr. Jeanette Council has also been named as one of our honorary trustees as well and has done a great job. And sir, you follow in some, I started to say big footsteps, I better not say that, but in some honored hallways. I mean, you're dealing with the likes of Senator Tony Rand, Senator Laura Tally, you know, the father of the community college system, Dallas Herring, and so many others that have been so notable in terms of what we do for the people, not only of Cumberland County, but of the state itself. And so, on behalf of our Board of Trustees, I would like to express our congratulations to you and to inform our Board of County Commissioners of the honorable decision that was made today by our Board of Trustees at our board meeting. So congratulations to you, sir, well deserved, and we appreciate everything you do.
Several years ago, we had, the idea came about to honor some of the people in the community as an honorary trustee. And so each year, the Board of Trustees, the twelve members of the Board, are given the honor and the opportunity to recommend and to nominate someone. Now, this began about, I think about twelve years ago, but each year, there's been times when an honorary was not selected or... So what we're trying to do, and what the Board is trying to do, is keep that wall of honor to people who have made a contribution along the way to Federal Tech and also to the community. And last year, I nominated my friend Jeanette Council, who was my third grade teacher, not really.
Don't believe that.
But, and I know that over the years, when I was an employee at Federal Tech, and each year when we became, when we came before the county commissioners and asked for their support and what we needed to complete our journey as far as all paying absolutely the maintenance people, the housekeepers and all of them, is funded by the county. I can't remember a time when we came that you all didn't support us. And I think Commissioner Adams, he and I were talking about that some time ago. We never came and asked for five thousand, you know, hoping we'd get three thousand. If we needed five thousand, that's what we asked for. So it is my honor and on behalf of Ron Crosby, the Chair of the Board, and the other members, we thank you for all you do and we congratulate you again, Mr. Adams. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just have a few words, and thank you all so very much, just, tonight
was a surprise. We did this today at your Board of Trustees meeting and I was truly honored to be named one of the honorary trustees, only eight in the history of the entire college. But you know, what I told, said at the trustee meeting, and it really was a true thing, is that Federal Technical Community College touches every facet of this community. You know, we talk about K through twelve and we talk about higher education, but you take everybody who comes, whether they've got a college degree, high school degree, we do credentialing, you do degrees, it's multifaceted in terms of that. And the story we heard today of touching people's lives, making it better, and I think that's what Federal Tech does, and I'm honored to be associated with the institution that does that. I'll tell you, two of the highest moments that I've had is I was commencement speaker out at Federal Tech for their graduation, and now to be named the honorary trustee. I do truly thank you and appreciate all that you do for this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. And Madam Chair, if I may just take a moment, you have hot off the presses our annual report. And so some of the things that Chairman Adams was just mentioning about those people that are served and touched in so many ways, we've left each of you a copy of that report, and I would encourage you to peruse through that in your leisure time and take a look at the difference you make. I made a comment today to our board, I said, "Not one entity, not one individual, not one group does it all, to include us. It takes all of us in concert with each other." I'll tell you a quick story. Last week, I had, two days, I had an individual on campus that goes all over these United States. He was looking, one of our speakers in one of our installations, you know, toward the end of the week. And the truth is, he says, "I drove on this campus," and he said, "I could not believe what I saw." And this guy goes all over the United States, colleges, universities, secondary schools, and so forth. And he said, "I could not believe what I see." And he said, he was complimenting us on our grounds and our buildings and our people and all the things that we were doing. And honestly, I thought about you all. We could not do what we do on those campus grounds and the other facilities that we have were it not for you. It's just that simple. And we translate that into the services that we provide. You got to hear from one student today that basically came from a very dark place and is in a place of enlightenment now, and it was because of what we collectively did to influence her life and do the things that she did. So I want to tell you, I appreciate all of you and all you do to help us. I hope you take the time to look at that annual report, and we do it each and every year. Now seventeen eighteen, and the reason we do that, it's not because we're slow, it's just that those numbers are cleaned and cleaned and cleaned where those are the absolute numbers that we deal with, those are the real numbers. We wanted to get it right before we bring it to you. So the point being, thank you so much for all your support. Congratulations, Commissioner Adams, and by the way, thank you for your commencement speech, you did a great job. And you know, with that in mind, I'd extend my congratulations, Madam Chair, to all of you for the ongoing way in which you all represent this community and this county so ably and so well. Thank you so much for what all of you do.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. And congratulations, Glenn.
Thank you.
Now our youth council members, we have two youth council members here tonight. If you would both come to the podium and introduce yourselves, I would appreciate it.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, we're a part of Federal Cumberland Youth Council. My name is Kalia and I am a senior attending Cumberland Polytechnic High School.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Cotton and I am attending Pine Forest High School and I am as well a senior.
All right. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Mr. Keith is down there, praying again. Madam Chair, that's five bars, I tell you.
Can't see.
A high school athletic.
Mr. Keith?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me get my glasses on. I forgot, that's why I can't see. I forgot I didn't have a...
The microphone's right here, Mr. Keith.
Bend down.
Let's see.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You know, one of the things we really love doing here as part of being a public servant is recognizing greatness. And in our community, we are very fortunate to have a number of our young people that have achieved greatness. There are some things that happen that you can never take away from that. And one of those things is being a state champion. So tonight, we are going to recognize not only a state champion, but someone who has broken barriers, glass ceilings, and all other things. So I'm gonna ask, Medesha, come on up. Medesha Trapeer. And Coach, would you like to come up with her? Come on over here, Medesha. How are you? All right, okay. You are witnessing right here, a state wrestling champion. So that's something nobody can ever take away from you, and I hope you're very proud of yourself for what you've done and how you represented Cumberland County, but her path is a little bit unorthodox. Medesha actually attends Cumberland International Early College, but they don't have much of a wrestling team, do they? No, okay. So she was able to, through the way that things work in the school system, she was able to participate with Jack Britt Wrestling. Now, most of you probably didn't even know that they have a women's wrestling federation, but was this the first year they've had that? First year they've had it? Went to Winston-Salem?
Yes.
Yeah, Winston-Salem, and competed for the first time and won her class through the guidance of the wrestling team. She actually competed with the boys during the season? Yes. So, but went in as a, as one of the females in the state wrestling class and through the guidance of her coach and the support of her team, won the state championship and represented Cumberland County. So with that, I'd like to congratulate you for everything you did and your representation. Thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words? Coach Byron, is that right, say, would you like to say anything about this young lady here? Come on up here.
Actually, two weeks ago too, they had the first national wrestling championships for the women's, and Medesha went there and ended up becoming the first, one of the first North Carolina All-Americans for girls, placing seventh at the one hundred and sixty pounds.
Now I know how good you're on the mat, how good are you on a microphone? All right. Can you tell us a little bit about your journey? Come on, come up here.
I started off at the one seventy weight class and I worked my way down to the one sixty weight class and then to the one fifty-two weight class during the season. And I worked hard with the boys and they never, they didn't, at first, they might have underestimated me, but through the season, we became a family and we worked hard to accomplish what we wanted.
Well, that being said, it's, I can't emphasize enough, you know, about two weeks ago, we had two of the boys, and it's just, it's so monumental. We have three state champions in wrestling and from Cumberland County, and that's such a big feat, and we're really proud of you and thank you for representing Cumberland County. All right, come on around here and shake everybody's hand.
That's impressive. Congratulations. Congratulations. Let's have the rest of your team.
Beautiful. Oh, from family.
Family members, I'm sorry.
Always good to see you, son.
Family members, would you come up too, please? I should have, I still...
Medesha, we're gonna get a picture.
No, come on. We're gonna get a picture, took the family members, come around, please. Start right there.
Is that the training board there?
Chicken at every...
It's a great thing, you should be very proud.
Want a family, picture, please, yes.
Yep, looks good.
You tighten up.
I'll go twenty right now, and you and Glenn.
Have you guys in the front row get together just a little?
I'd like to see a push-up competition.
Tighten up.
One, two. Don't move. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
First trustee, he gets his arm broken.
Well Jimmy said it best, it's always great to recognize good people, and you don't have to look far in this county to find a lot of where it's young ladies, young men, people that work every day. So many people contribute so many great things, and I don't know anything more important in a person's life than being caught doing something right and some validation for the good things that we do. This evening, in keeping with that tradition, Mr. Sam Lucas, will you come up? And Jeff, I know you're sleeping there, wake up, come on up here. Let me, let me tell you a little bit about Sam. He began his career in Cumberland County in nineteen eighty-four as an engineering tech in the county engineering department, and he worked thirty-four years in engineering and retired January the first. During his tenure, Sam was involved with numerous engineering projects, including capital construction, building renovations, mechanical system replacements, security cameras, installation, roofing, parking lot improvements, and you name it. He's an All-American, he can do it all. In nineteen seventy-seven, he graduated from Terry Sanford High School, and he was not on the wrestling team, I can tell you that. But he was presented with many things during his tenure, Employee Recognition Award in October of two thousand and twenty-twelve by the county commissioners, and a reception that we did. One of the things, many for reducing Cumberland County's water costs through the installation of sewer meters at several facilities, cooling towers as part of heating and air conditioning system. These meters enabled PWC to send county invoices based on actual amounts of wastewater being discharged instead of water consumption. Sam plans to move to Florida, where he will work on his golf game and find a part-time job to support his golf habit, but not necessarily in that order. And would his caddy please come up here? She has agreed to carry his bag, choose the right club, and probably get a job and pay for his golf. So, congratulations.
Do we have a plaque?
Sam W. Lucas, Cumberland County Engineering and Infrastructure in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County, February the 13th, 84 through January the 1st, 2019, from Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, April 15th, 2019. And I know he's a man of few words, but before he talks, Jeff Brown. You have, uh, he was fortunate enough to work with Jeff occasionally.
So you hold that. Jeff, how about saying a few words about Sam?
Thank you, Commissioner Lancaster. Uh, I had the pleasure of working with Sam. I've been with the county this month, it'll be my seven years, so, uh, learned quite a bit from Sam. He left us in January, we just now have got his office cleaned out. It wasn't a mess. Uh, but no, Sam, wish you the best of luck in your retirement. Appreciate the dedication and your professionalism that you give Cumberland County and to the citizens of this county. So thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Not really.
Not really.
Just thank you for letting me, giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens of Cumberland County. Thank you.
Okay. You wanna go around and check a few hands?
Thank you.
And... One more. Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Hi there. You gonna join me up here, my friend?
Again, it's a pleasure, uh, to stand with this young lady right here, Dr. Lan Tran Foo. She retired in December of 2018 after more than 20 years of committed and dedicated service to the citizens of Cumberland County at the Department of Public Health. She began her career in Cumberland County in March of 1998 as a staff physician in the childcare clinic. In June of 2000, she was promoted to medical director of the department's women's clinic and served in that capacity until July 2007. She was then promoted to the position of medical director of the health department and served in that role until her retirement in December. During her tenure, Dr. Foo was an integral part of the growth and development of the services of the health department and was a key member of the senior leadership team. In addition to her participation in health policy development, she also oversaw many community outreach departments, services, and activities that contributed to the health and wellness of the citizens of Cumberland County. Let me read that again. "To the health and wellness of the citizens of Cumberland County." That's an honor.
Congratulations. Doctor, ah, assistant doctor, Wayne Holder.
Uh, I've had the honor of serving as, uh, the county's interim health director since February of last year and during that time, I had the opportunity to serve with Dr. Tran Foo. And not only did she welcome me aboard on the leadership team, but she also helped to, uh, provide some of the history and, uh, help with some of the continuity during the transition. She was always very supportive and very encouraging, uh, as we were faced with many challenges in the department. A testament to her dedication to Cumberland County, she is actually in retirement now, currently working with Duke researchers. I think I can see that. Okay, all right.
You said it.
She's working, I know. She's working with some researchers from Duke University to try to, uh, get some grant money down here in Cumberland County to help us, uh, with some of our health challenges. So that's a testament to her continued dedication and she's doing that totally pro bono in retirement and we're thankful for everything that she has contributed. Uh, the staff, uh, that she has left behind are very competent and, uh, have made the transition very smooth for all of us at the health department. I will. Presented to Dr. Lan P. Tran Foo, Cumberland County Department of Public Health, in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County, March 2nd, 1998 to January 1st, 2019, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, April 15th, 2019.
Because I need to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to serve, um, Cumberland County. So, um, well, I have grown a lot by services to, by, by becoming the, a public servant. I finally understood what it is to public servant. Like they said, we have to be able to grow a tree knowing that we will never be able, well, we will be too old to sit in the shade, uh, under the shade of that tree. That's what. Thank you so much.
Joseph, I will recognize, uh, Mr. Joseph Smith, who served as, uh, Tran Foo's administrative assistant.
Thank you so much, thank you. For our public count, uh, comment period, I'd like to call on County Manager Amy Cannon to read the policy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of three minutes. The public comment period is an opportunity for the Board of Commissioners to hear, uh, citizens' concerns, but is not intended to require an immediate response from the Board of Commissioners this evening. We ask that all speakers come to the lectern and please give their name and address. Thank you.
Are there speakers?
We have three speakers. Our first speaker is Wayne D.
Wayne, okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Chief District Court Judge Robert Steele.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Robert Steele, 117 Dix Street. Uh, before we get into a few numbers, I want to just go off-base a couple topics. Number one, Sam Lucas, y'all lost a great one. I can just tell you, as chief, the projects, the things judges have worked on. Sam has, he gets a grade of 110 on a customer service. He's a great listener. He's not a big talker, but that means he's a super listener. Sorry he stepped out, but he was probably one of your best and greatest employees. Although you have many that are fantastic, uh, we lost a good one. Secondly, you know when you should be close to retirement age as you're listening to stuff and you can't really hear it properly and you're misunderstanding things. And I needed to thank Dr. Powell because initially I thought they were congratulating Glenn for being the ornery-est trustee member at Fayetteville Tech for a while and it took Dr. Powell's explanation to kinda get me where I was in the right place. Um, your numbers locally on your jail, as you have heard, 814 is the expected capacity. This morning, we were at 659. Since we last met, the low was 633. I think it's my goal at some point in time this year to get it below 600. But I want to say, it's not the judge or the judges that do this. Your pre-trial, your county employees do an excellent job. These numbers has, have hovered 725, 740 on average and that tells me they are the ones really that need the credit. They're doing a fantastic job. For last month, you had 61,785 citizens come through your doors. There were a little over 21,000 hearings. Grand jury was 354, Superior Court numbers 2,170. Your district court, 18,490 hearings. Yeah, a lot of them are traffic tickets, but they're also termination of parental rights, custody cases, and we have a lot of those trials and very few jury trials in Superior Court now. So that'll give you a flavor of your numbers. You've heard me touch on time, from time to time, the local jail. Local jails nationally are the greatest holding tanks for the mentally ill. And at some point in time, many of the other urban areas have funded a coordinator spot to deal with mentally ill in jail. You've got a human trafficking program that we've got limited funding on. And at some point, I think city and county ought to seriously consider funding one or two coordinator positions. They will save you hundreds of thousands of dollars for over and above whatever those salaried positions are. They will manage in an intensive way the needs, the expectations, the numbers in that jail. Um, they run you, they run us as taxpayers about a hundred bucks a day, a pop, to house them. A hundred a day, a little under that. Your state recovery, even if they are convicted, is $68 a day. So it's a net loss, even if people are convicted, they are ordered to pay and pay. So with that, just again, something to kinda keep, keep the ball on the horizon, the eyes focused on that ball as we move forward together and I appreciate the privilege of working with every single one of you and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Carmella McKellar Smith.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Carmella McKellar Smith. I live at 6840 Thames Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I stand before you this evening as a taxpayer, a Cumberland County resident, a parent of a Cumberland County school student, and as a student advocate. Some of you know me and know that I have been a consistent and persistent voice in advocating for the students in our school system. Some years back, as I complained to a friend on the inaction of Board of Education on issues confronting some of our students, she, an education attorney, explained to me in words that were an epiphany for me. She said, "They don't represent the student, they represent the school system." In that moment, I decided that my voice and actions would always be used to represent the child. As you may know, 45% of students in our school system are black, representing the ethnic majority of the student body. Our black girls are suspended at seven times the rate of white girls. Our black boys are suspended at five times the rate of white boys. And only 46% of black students are found to be proficient by North Carolina standards. Of the 16 low-performing schools, the majority of the student body in those schools are overwhelmingly black. In the three years that the state has identified low-performing schools, we have gone from 11 to 13 to the current 16. There are whispers that we may see a further decline in proficiency. So what are we doing? Cumberland County Schools has a $500 million budget. I believe that almost 100 million of that budget are local tax dollars. It has been well-publicized that the board will be making an ask for an additional 9 million taxpayer dollars. A whopping $56,000 has been specifically allocated to our low-performing schools and that money is to provide technical assistance for, for support for low-performing schools. In other words, leadership training. 30,000 of that will be going to a vendor. Where are the programs? Where's the plan? Where's the commitment to thousands of students that sit in those 16 schools? They matter. My request to you as stewards of our tax dollars is that you demand an actionable plan for increasing proficiency for black students, that there be accountability in that plan, that we no longer accept the failure of black children in our school system as a given. It's okay to say no in this budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there?
There are no further speakers.
Okay, there are no further speakers. Ms. Cannon?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I have a, a couple of changes to ask the board to consider this evening. Under the consent agenda, I would ask the board to remove items 2H and...
Item what? I didn't...
I'm sorry. Item 2H. And also, item 2J. In addition, Madam Chair, at our agenda session last Thursday, um, we had an item which was consideration of a funding agreement under the Home Investment Partnership Program. We had one commissioner that was not comfortable in moving that forward as a consent item. Since Thursday, that commissioner has, um, reported that his questions have been answered and he's agreeable to moving that item to the consent agenda from an item of business, if that's your desire this evening.
All right, thank you. And may I also add? I need to add a closed session for personnel matter, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Without objection.
Question?
Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Keith?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Madam Manager, the item that you removed from items of business to consent, was there only one commissioner that was uncomfortable with that?
I believe that, um, from the agenda session, there was only one commissioner that voted against actually moving it forward as a consent agenda.
Okay, I thought there was, I thought there was more than that.
Let me speak up, I'm sorry. Jimmy, you, you are correct. You voted to, for it not to be on consent, didn't you?
I, I did, I thought you did too.
Yeah, I did too, but I, I got most of my questions answered and I thought, I was thinking I was the only one. But you are correct, you are the one. So let's, let's leave it where it is.
Wait a minute.
That's my...
What are we doing? Do you have further questions?
Well, I thought it was gonna be an item, uh, it's kinda taking me a little bit by surprise.
Yeah, that, that, I, I made a mistake. I, I was thinking I was the only one who had an objection and, uh, since, since I'm not the only one, let's leave it under items of businesses.
Well...
If that's what you want to do.
What were, what were your, what were your questions that were answered? Because that might help me out. I, I know Commissioner Adams was not in and he expressed some, some... He, he had said something about it and, uh, but he was not available at the vote. But so, if, if, maybe we could keep it on an agenda item and then the questions that Commissioner Fairclough had, it, it might help me out.
I apologize, Commissioner Keith. Let's, um, I would ask Madam Chair withdraw my request and please keep it as an item of business.
All right. So item... It was item four, wasn't it?
That was 4B. Yes, ma'am.
4B.
4B.
Yes, leave it under business.
Will stay a business item, and we're adding a closed session.
Madam Chair, I would move for approval of the agenda with the items as noted.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
I forgot about you guys.
Item two is the consent agenda.
All right, and we have...
Madam Chair, I would, with her pulling those, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. With the exceptions...
That she pulled, she pulled two items.
That she pulled, okay.
Yes.
With the exception of C agent 2J. Those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Just a minute.
I feel a pattern developing here. I'd like to pull item 2N1.
Item what, sir?
2N1.
Pull for discussion.
Pull for discussion.
Okay. And Madam Chair, I'm a little bit confused by what the manager said the first time. Is she pulling these just totally off the consent agenda, or...
I'm removing, asking to remove them from the agenda.
Just remove from the agenda, not to...
Yes.
For discussion, okay.
With those, I would renew, it was my motion, so taking off 1 and 2 and out of consent agenda, and removing 2H and J, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Again. I don't know where we are, what we're doing now. All right. You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Now, Madam Chair, we would need to consider item N1. Under the consent agenda 2N1, which was an item at the agenda session last Thursday, it was the Mid-Carolina Council of Government Study and Recommendations.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I go?
Okay. Yes. Mr. Keith?
I pulled, I pulled this item. This was, this has been a long-running discussion about this agency that we have. And in, and in my years of playing football, I recognize a punt pretty easily, and this is a punt. This is absolutely, we have identified a number of issues, and the consultant report came back simply with, we should reinvigorate this, this group. And to me, without a lot of additional information, not a lot of timeline, no anything, this has been an ongoing problem. And the fact of the matter is, in, in our county, we are paying other agencies to be doing what this agency does in many other counties, according to what the state directives are for council of governments. So although I'm not going to ask that it be totally removed, I would ask that this strategic plan have some sort of timeline on it till they can come back. Because so many times, we have a consultant study, they say we're going to do something, and then it just goes by the wayside until we forget about it, until something else happens. So I would request and make a motion that the strategic plan be committed and sent back to the county commissioners within six months.
As chair of the group, we have intentions of doing that, Mr. Keith, but I will entertain the motion and...
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, this was brought before, before all three of the member counties, Harnett County, Sampson County, and Cumberland County. Step one is for approval to stay in as a member county and to go forward with revitalizing the COG. The next step is for the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments to hire a consultant to move forward and to review the strategic plan, and then those, that strategic plan will be brought back or reviewed with each member county.
Did I see your light?
No, I guess that one died as, lack of a second. I was just going to move whenever you finish with that. I don't think it got a second, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Was there a motion?
As he made a motion, there was no second.
Right.
So we will...
Madam, Madam Chair, I would approve the study recommendation of revitalizing the Mid-Carolina COG by the member counties through an intensive strategic planning process to develop a multi-year action plan. And as with at least listening to Mr. Keith, I would like to have a review within, because we don't need to drag it out. We have gone through this process, either within three months or six months. I don't know how long it takes to get the consultant. Mr. Keith talked about six months. I was a little bit short in that. I'm asking Madam Manager what you think is reasonable.
The Mid-Carolina COG is meeting mid-May to move forward with that process. And so we hope to initiate that, begin that process by the end of May, developing that strategic planning process, and each board member would be involved in that visioning process.
Then six months, which would put us at the beginning of the year. That would be my motion.
Was that for the strategic plan, Mr. Adams?
Yes.
I can support that if that's...
Yes, I mean, that's, yeah, have that, yes. I incorporated yours into mine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion on the motion, and I'm going to recognize...
I'll second his motion, Madam Chair, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Madam Chair, in interest of clarity, I would ask that this motion be restated by somebody. Maybe not Glenn.
Oh, maybe not me. All I did was, we approved the study recommendation of revitalizing the Mid-Carolina COG by the member counties through an intensive strategic planning process to develop a multi-year action plan, and that the strategic plan be brought back within six months, which would be the first of the year.
Okay.
Okay? Is that okay?
And that was a motion and a second.
Second still carries.
Discussion on the motion. We have been studying as a, as chair of the Mid-Carolina Council of Government, which is a three-county region. We recognize the shortcomings, and we have hired a company to direct the strategic plan. I assure you that we did not look at this lightly. We have been working with these consultants and the other two counties that are, are involved. We know that the three counties are, we are deep into budget season, and that is the reason why we need, and I'm glad you said six months, Mr. Keith, because we're ending in, talking about May, and then we're into budget season, and then June, and then in July, some of the COG councils' members don't meet. But I assure you that the plans will be to have a viable organization, one that is invigorated, and one unlike the one that we have seen for the past 18 years. That's my comment. I feel the same way you do, Mr. Keith.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Now, with no other comments, thank you for allowing me to speak. I call for the vote. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you so much. What else?
Item number three are our public hearings, and we'll begin with our uncontested rezoning cases.
Didn't he pull 2 too? Didn't he pull, I thought you pulled 1 and 2.
No, just 1.
No, he just pulled 1. 2J she removed from P.
Okay. So uncontested rezoning cases. Mr. Strickland will begin with case P 1902.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Case P 1902 is the rezoning of .47 acres from A1 Agricultural to CP Planned Commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located at north of NC Highway 24 and west of Mary McCall Road, submitted by Kevin A. Carroll. The request was modified to CP Planned Commercial and CZ conditional zoning to allow for a billboard at the location. There is Stedman water and sewer available at the location. There are no soil limitations. The 2030 Growth Vision Plan recommended community growth area here, and the Stedman Land Use Plan from 1999 recommended suburban residential. The planning board did unanimously approve the staff recommendation, which recommended approval based on the, the plans meeting the community growth areas, which were detailed in the 2030 Growth Vision Plan at the location, and meeting the location criteria for heavy commercial as defined in the Land Use Policies Plan of 2009. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those, and if you, if you'd like, we can go through the slideshow.
All right. Mr. Adams?
I just had a question, because it's the intersection of that, of that corner there, and billboards can be kind of any, little bit of everything, and do we know the height, the width, the size, in terms of coming out of those roads, making those turns? I know how 24 has been widened.
Right.
But if I'm coming out of the, the secondary road, and I'm looking to either side, I think doesn't have a median down the middle, so you're going to have to take that right?
It does have a median, yes, sir.
You've got to take that right, right?
Yes, sir.
So you'd be looking right back at where, where that billboard is. So is it...
We do not know the...
Do you have any kind of conditions on size of billboards? High, 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 low? What?
I think the zoning...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, here, here's the, the plan for Commissioner Adams. So you can see, it's 20 feet in the sign size itself, and then it's 12 feet off the ground, and then it's 25 feet wide from the front view. And again, this would, you know, this would still have to go to NC DOT for approval also.
So is it digital, or, because I'm looking at...
We, as far as we know, it's not digital at this point. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions? If not, in the case P 1902, I move to approve the rezoning from A1 Agricultural to CP Planned Commercial, CZ conditional zoning for a billboard, subject to the conditions stated in the minutes of the meeting of the planning board included within our packet, and find the approval is an amendment to the current, adopted current Stedman Land Use Plan, 1999 map, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map for this request. And the following change in conditions was considered in amending the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, to meet the development needs of the community. And I just killed my, here it is. The requested district is consistent with the more recently adopted 2030 Growth Vision Plan 2009, which calls for community growth areas at this location and meets the location criteria for heavy commercial as defined in the Land Use Plan Policies Plan 2009, particularly because of the recent North Carolina Highway 24 improvements, and that this rezoning approval is reasonable and in the public interest because the new NC Highway 24 has controlled access, and the request will have minimum traffic and noise impact to the surrounding area. Second. Are there questions? Seeing none, we ready to vote. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
The next case we have is case P 1903. This is very similar to the last case. It's rezoning of one acre from A1 Agricultural to CP Planned Commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located at 8321 Clinton Road, also submitted by Kevin A. Carroll. And the applicant, again, has modified the request to CP Planned Commercial CZ conditional zoning, again, to allow for a billboard. Water and septic availability, there's Stedman water and septic for the sewer availability. Again, the 2030 Growth Vision Plan calls for community growth areas here, and the Stedman Land Use Plan called for farmland at this location. Just, just for your information, you can see the, the other case on this map also. We did measure out the distance. There's approximately 1,400 feet in between the two signs. The DOT regulations call for a minimum of 500 feet. The planning board did unanimously recommend approval and endorse the staff approval, again, for the same reasons, that it met the recently adopted 2030 Growth Vision Plan from 2009, and that it's reasonable and in the public interest because NC Highway 24 has controlled access and will have minimal traffic and noise concerns. Again, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those, or we can go further into the presentation if needed.
Mr. Keith?
Did you say that DOT requires a minimum of 500, and this is 400?
No, this is 1,400. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions, or is there a motion?
The vice chair.
Oh, shoot. I didn't have...
I'll make the motion.
We open, open the...
Yeah.
Public hearing.
We got to go back.
And we got to go back to open the public hearing and close the public hearing. All right. Open the public hearing on that case.
There are no speakers.
No speakers, I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the rezoning from A1 Agricultural to CP Planned Commercial slash CZ conditional zoning for a billboard, subject to the conditions stated in the minutes of the meeting of the planning board included within our packet, and find number A, the approval is an amendment to the adopted current Stedman Land Use Plan 1999 map, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map for this request. And B, the following change in conditions was considered in amending the zoning ordinance, zoning map, to meet the developmental needs of the community. The requested district is consistent with the more recently adopted 2030 Growth Vision Plan 2009, which calls for community growth areas at this location and meets most of the location criteria for heavy commercial as defined in the Land Use Policies Plan 2009. And C, that this rezoning approval is reasonable and in the public interest because the new NC Highway 24 has controlled access, and the request will have minimum traffic and noise impact to the surrounding area.
Second. Mr. Keith?
I'm sorry, ma'am, that was last time.
Oh, all right.
And I guess my question is, it doesn't really have to do with this, but is this what we're going to do all the way down, in, in terms of the zoning department? Is this what we're going to do all the way down 24, is just put these billboards up so that our, we get, and I'm not talking about these folk here, so I hope they don't get that, but billboard pollution going all the way down, up and down 24 because it's been widened? Is that, is that, have we studied this? Have we, have we actually even thought about how our community's going to look in terms of this? We'll get Bragg Boulevard with the billboards all up and down, and then they start getting raggedy or whatever, so I mean...
Sure. I don't think that's the intent, Commissioner Adams. And to your point, we are actually doing a small area plan in Stedman right now. So that's some of the things we're going to talk to the town about, what, how they actually do want to see this area grow, and what they want to see from, from this area. But again, to your point, you know, DOT still has a say in how many end up out there, what gets approved. And I'll tell you, the, the applicant, his concern, he owns business in Stedman, and his concern was that with the bypass, now people are bypassing Stedman, and they're not aware of what's there.
And I do understand that, and I mean, and, because I can miss Stedman going down 24 too. I have to go kind of the old way to be able to get there. But since it's been widened, it's just, I think it is important for us to go back out there. We did that land use a long time ago, but since that widened at the 24, I think things are going to change out there in terms of what happens, so.
No, I agree.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are we ready? Add a motion?
We already had the motion. Just calling for the vote.
Calling for the vote. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Item C is our contested rezoning cases, Case P-1913.
And not to cut you off, but I guess we need to go back to Case P-1902 because we did not have a public hearing on that. And I think before we move on, I guess we need to go back and make sure that the record is clear.
I think you can just open the public hearing to see if there are any speakers.
1902.
What did he say?
1902.
Open in Case P-1902. Are there, I'll open the public hearing. Are there speakers?
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers, I'll close the public hearing.
Now we're moved to the contested cases, Case P-1913.
Yes, ma'am. Case P-1913 is the rezoning of one acre from RR Rural Residential to A1A Agricultural slash CZ conditional zoning for a kennel operation or to a more restrictive zoning district located at 6647, 6651 and 6657 Parkton Road, submitted by Jerry and Mary King. And we'll go through the slides for you here, you can see the surrounding zoning in the area. There's some rural residential RR and some A1 in the area also. Here you see some single-family residential surrounding the area, some single-wide manufactured homes. Here's the subject property within the larger parent tract, also owned by the same individual. Here's the hydro soils map. And here's a site plan of the kennel and the access. And there's a little more zoomed in site plan. We'll go through the pictures. Here's the driveway that accesses the subject property. Here's a picture of the subject property from that drive. An additional picture of the subject property. Here's the southwest view from Parkton Road. The northwest view from Parkton Road. And the northeast view from Parkton Road. Though there is well, water availability and septic. The 2030 Growth Vision Plan calls for rural areas within this vicinity and Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan calls for farmland. The Planning Board unanimously recommended the approval of the rezoning from RR Rural Residential to A1 Agricultural Conditional Zoning for Kennel Operation at this location as they found it applicable with the district being farmland designated and found it is in harmony with the surrounding zoning and land use. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you. I see Mr., I need to open the public hearing first. I've got two people who want to speak with questions. Want to entertain the questions first or to speak first?
It might clear up some things if I'm able to ask my question now.
Okay, well let me recognize Mr. Evans, he was a minute quicker than you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick question, you showed a map that had housing on it, didn't you? Didn't I see that? Okay, and the pictures, I'm not seeing, how far are these houses from this property?
Yeah, we actually did look at that, Commissioner Evans, the closest home was approximately 650 feet from where the kennel operation would be.
Okay, but I'm not seeing any pictures. And, I mean, I meant to get a visual of what's happening, yeah.
That single wide there that is a different property owner, that would be the closest residence to the kennel and that's the one we measured at 650 feet.
Okay, so right over here at this corner, what is that?
Down.
No, further down, this way.
At the bottom.
The double wide. That, that is a residence, but that's the property owner who's filled-
Okay, what about over in the corner there? That's the property owner as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, do I understand that they are just trying to rezone a portion of this property to meet this special need as a conditional use of such?
Yes, sir, that's exactly right. They're operating now as agricultural farmland already, they've got animals on the property. So they're just rezoning during the conditional zoning for the kennel.
So they're busting up their property to have it partitioned of sorts?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? If not, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Are there speakers?
We have no speakers.
And I'll close the public hearing. What is your pleasure? On P-1913?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair. It's okay?
Mr. Keith?
Yes, yes, ma'am. In the case of P-19-13, I move to approve the rezoning from RR Rural Residential to A1A Agricultural Conditional Zoning for a kennel operation subject to the conditions stated in the minutes of the meeting of the Planning Board included within our packet and find that this recommendation to be consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan of 2013, which calls for farmland at this location. The text of the plan states that A1A Agriculture is an applicable district under the farmland designation and further find approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the use will be on a large rural parent tract and utilize buffering that will lessen any impact on the surrounding area and the district requested is in harmony with surrounding zoning and land uses.
Second, the motion.
You've heard the motion and the second. Seeing no questions? Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Our final case is Case P-1914.
Yes, ma'am. Case P-1914 is the rezoning of 3.7 acres from R6A Residential and C3 Heavy Commercial to C2P Planned Service and Retail District Conditional Zoning for Trades Contractor Activities or to a more restrictive zoning district located at 4732 US Highway 301 South, submitted by Doris Bullock, the owner, and Tim Evans on behalf of Longleaf Properties. You can see the surrounding zoning here, there is a little bit of R6A Residential, there's also some commercial CP, CZ, C3 in the area. You see there's some single, single-family residents to the west of the property, also some multifamily residents to the west, some commercial beside the property just to the south, also across the street, there's also some commercial property within the area. The subject property is outlined there in blue. There is very little, very little hydro soils on the southern end of the property. There, you can see the water availability there from US Highway 301. Here's a site plan of the Conditional Zoning and Planned Service Retail District. And then here's the pictures of the property. This is a picture of the subject property and the structure currently on the property. Here's a picture of the subject property from the south looking back to the north end of the property. This is a picture from the north end looking more southwest of the property. This is the northeast view from the service road on US Highway 301. And this is the northwest view looking across US Highway 301. And the south view looking down US Highway 301 down the service road. The 2030 Growth Vision Plan called for this to be urban fringe and the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan called for it to be medium density mixed housing. At the Planning Board meeting, the Planning Board unanimously approved the recommendation of staff, which was to approve the rezoning based on the location criteria for light commercial as defined in the Land Use Policies Plan and also given the fact that the property already has some commercial zoning on the property, which you can see there in the southern portion of the property. That going to, the C2P would provide for a transition between the existing heavy commercial and the established residential areas. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to try to answer those for you.
Thank you. Are there speakers?
We have one speaker in favor and one speaker in opposition.
All right. Open the public hearing?
Our first speaker is Tim Evans.
Madam Chair, County Commissioners and staff, my name is Tim Evans, 4239 Cameron Road, Longleaf Properties. Commissioners, this piece of property has been on the market for approximately 15 years. I think I'm the fifth agent that's had it, lucky me. DSI currently just south of the property is the clients wanting to purchase this property. If you're not familiar with the DSI, they currently have 180 employees and they're wishing to take some of their profits and put on the Highway 301 corridor. Ms. Doris Bullock, the owner, is an elderly lady that lives in Dunn, North Carolina, and as staff said, part of this property is already zone commercial and in years past, I can't remember it, but at one time there was a barbecue business there. But we would like for you to see this in our favor and I'm sure once it's all done, it'll be something that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ted Scarborough.
Madam Chair, Counselors, my name is Ted Scarborough, I live at 3709 Stone Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina. I'm also the owner of Hog Country, which borders this property on the south. And I'm, there was a lot of wonderful stuff going on tonight, I'm very proud of you guys. Just wanted to get that out. All right. My concern is for public safety. Okay? This road is technically by the state in an improved dirt road. It is. It has never been paved. That looks like asphalt, but it's chipping sealed. Okay? Now, the state is trying to maintain it as they're filling holes and gaps as best they can. This was on the 4th April, this is how often this is being done. This is directly in front of my property, facing the appropriate property we're talking about. As you can see, there's a huge erosion and that's not from water. That's from vehicles not being able to pass each other safely and having to go off the road. That's what the state is fixing there. Okay? As you, as you can see, this is not, this is not a small little burn problem. It's tearing up the road. Commercial vehicles are having an extremely hard time passing each other and staying on the physical road. They're having to go off on the road, off into the grass. There is a roughly 14-inch crev, 14-inch crevice along the side of the road, 14 inches, right? And seven inches deep. That's larger than most people's passenger car sidewall on their tire. This is a hazard. Zone it commercial, but we have to do something with the road. It's a public safety thing. The road, just a few more pictures, different spots down through there of how deep this erosion, this is, this is, once again, it's not water erosion, this is traffic erosion. Just so you can see it, I wasn't trying to cheat you. The road is 15 feet, nine inches wide. All right? Business 95 is 22 feet wide. Two, a parking spot at Walmart is eight and a half feet wide, two of them would be 16, 17 feet, I'm sorry, 19 feet. Okay? Once again.
Okay.
Can I, can I continue?
You can finish your sentence.
Okay. This is a public safety question in my mind.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
And I have a question. Mr. Strickland?
Yes, ma'am.
You're good.
Why would people be trying to pass each other and you have double yellow lines?
That's, that's a fair point.
Coming at each other.
Coming at each other, same place.
Passing each other, not going around, just coming toward each other.
I had some more pictures I was gonna show you, ma'am.
Oh, coming toward each other.
But you're right, they shouldn't pass each other when they have a yellow line.
Pardon me?
You're, you're correct, though, they shouldn't pass each other on a double yellow line.
Coming toward each other.
Madam Chair, I had the same question.
Thank you. Do we have, does this area meet the criteria for the highway department?
Yes, ma'am, it's a, it's a DOT maintained road.
Right.
And we contacted DOT about it. They said that they would look into it and make the needed improvements, so, and that came from Mr. Greg Burns, the division engineer. So we did contact DOT and get their response on it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions? Thank you.
No further speakers.
If not, I will close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, please?
Madam Chair, I do have a question, but it wasn't for any of the speakers. I'm at a little bit of a dilemma here because I understand that we, we should not deny someone the highest and best use of their property, but I really take into consideration what he said because, you know, most accidents of people that come off a road and they turn their car over is when they're trying to get back on the road and that, that sort of deviation is, is, is pretty significant on that road. Every so often, we have roads that come to us on the DOT priority list. Can anybody here at staff talk about that or is, where does that come from? Is it usually?
What's that?
DOT comes to us with a list of priority roads in the county that they're, that they're talking about. Is the criteria of, okay, this is a service road, we don't really care how many trucks and vehicles come up and down this road, we're maintaining it at a level we see sufficient and that's the end of it? Or how do they judge the criteria of which roads they are going to widen in the, in the unincorporated areas and which roads that they're going to improve in some other ways?
I don't think we have the answer this evening, but we can certainly reach out to Mr. Greg Burns and get that information.
Okay. This is a tough one, this is, I don't want to deny the property owner, but at the same time I do recognize the issue.
Are there other questions? Or do you wish to delay this?
No, no, ma'am. I, I, I think if the rest of the Commissioners have their questions answered, we can move ahead.
All right, and you, Mr. Strickland, did research?
Yes, ma'am.
The problem, okay.
And if, if you want me to respond to Mr. Keith's?
If you have an answer, I'd, thank you very much.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit. You mentioned widening, as far as widening, there is a prioritization process that goes through DOT for that, happens every couple of years. As far as maintenance, there's usually a cycle and I, don't quote me on this, but I believe the cycle is every seven years, they intend to get to every road that they maintain. I don't know where the service road falls on that cycle, Mr. Keith, that's something we can investigate and find out for you if you're interested in it. We did look up the traffic count on that service road, it's 2,300 cars a day, if, if that gives you any background at all.
But it would probably increase with the development.
It could, yes, sir.
How long it take to fix it?
Well, 2,300 cars.
Oh, 2,300 cars. And DOT is slow.
Twenty-three hundred.
Vehicles a day, yes, ma'am.
On the service road?
On the service road. That was as of two thousand sixteen.
Turn it into the neighborhood? I know, I know where that three oh one is, without.
The count was, the count was done a little bit north of this location, but it was the closest count on the service road.
Okay, 'cause farther up, you could have where they, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's not up there by the graveyard and all that, though, is it? Because that, that would, that would skew your numbers.
No, it's not that far north.
Okay, it's not that far.
Yes, sir.
It would skew your numbers if that did that.
All right. What is your pleasure? Oh, I've got other questions.
I don't have any other questions. I'm good.
Mr. Faircloth?
Madam Chair, I'd move that in case P nineteen dash fourteen, that we approve the rezoning from R six A Residential and C three heavy commercial to C two P planned service and retail slash conditional zoning for trade contractor activities, subject to the conditions stated in the amendments of the meeting of the planning board, included within our packet, and find, A, the approval is an amendment of the adopted current Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan twenty thirteen map, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional request or application for amendment to said map for this request. B, the following change in the conditions was considered in the amendment zoning ordinance to meet the development needs of the community. The subject property meets most of the location criteria for light commercial as defined in the land use policy, policy plans of Plan two thousand and nine. Already has some existing heavy commercial zoning on the parcel, and would serve as a transition between the existing heavy commercial and established residential areas. And C, that the rezoning approval is reasonable and in the public interest because the district requested is in harmony with the surrounding existing land uses. And zoning and approval of the request will allow the entire subject property to be zoned in the same district, to be zoned the same district.
All right. I'll second your motion. Are there additional questions? Not those in favor?
And, yeah.
Yes?
Before we go on, you know, and I, and I understand what my man is talking about as far as DOT is concerned. DOT, when it comes to fixing roads or things of that concern for our citizens, they are slow as ever. And sometimes it does, barely gets done. And I can understand what he's, what he's saying about that road and the traffic going on it. So, I think that we really need to consider this for him. I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
You're welcome.
Those in favor of this motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Faircloth, Council, and Adams. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Keith and Evans.
Madam Chair, we'll move to item number four on the agenda, under our items of business. Four A is consideration of a land lease to the Federal Aviation Administration. I'm gonna ask our assistant manager, Tracy Jackson, to present this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Staff's bringing to you tonight a request from the Federal Aviation Administration to continue a lease for a low-level windshear alert sensor near Arnett Park. This has been there for a number of years, and they are asking for lease renewal. The major change in the lease is to go from a ten-year term to a twenty-year term. And there is no fee that is collected for this twenty-by-twenty tract of land at Arnett Park. And this does benefit, of course, the Fayetteville Airport and all the aviation that comes in and out of there.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
And I guess it's just, is it on a pole and is it a windshear?
So, it's a, it's a monopole with a sensor on top of it, so it's easy to miss. If you're driving by there, it probably looks a lot like a utility pole.
The only problem I have, and it's always the government, not this government, but the federal government, basically says, whatever they put there, when they leave, it's our problem to take it down. That's under six point three point eighteen, non-restoration. They don't care what they do to it, whatever it is, it's our fault, it's our problem. And we giving it to, they, they basically got a twenty-year lease on anything. And so, they put it up and just basically say, you know, it's your problem when I leave, no matter how rusty, how old, how rough. That was my issue.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
I don't know if you can battle the government.
Are there, uh... Are there other questions about this item, item four?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second your motion. Seeing no questions, those in favor of the motion?
You unanimous?
Thank you.
Item four B is consideration of funding agreement under the Home Investment Partnership Program with Kingdom Community Development Corporation. I will ask our Community Development Director, Dee Taylor, to please come forward and present this item.
Good evening. This item was brought before the board during the agenda session meeting.
I can't, just some mosquitoes or something in here, I can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. This item was brought before the agenda session meeting during, on April fifteenth. And there were some concerns that were brought, brought about from the board that I would like to address briefly this evening, if I may. I would like to first address the concern of how we selected our CHODO, or our Community Housing Development Organization. I also want to address the question about how we determine what's affordable and how tenants are selected to stay in these units. So, the first point I want to make is describing what our home funds are used for and the requirements that we must meet. As an entitlement jurisdiction of home funds, we are required to set aside fifteen percent of our allocation for CHODO use. And we have to reserve those funds for CHODO purposes within twenty-four months. And I believe there was a question in reference to ownership. For this type of project, the developer must own the property during the development phase and throughout the affordability period, which in this case will be twenty years. Now, I believe there was a question also in reference to the selection of our CHODO. Now, as I mentioned during the agenda session meeting, we submit a, or post a request for proposal annually prior to the beginning of our program year. And there are strict guidelines that a nonprofit must meet in order to become a CHODO. Now, during the RFP, we did not receive any responses for the affordable housing. We received it for our other activities, such as public service and public facilities, but none for affordable housing. So, therefore, we are, and there's only two CHODOs in our community. The county uses Kingdom, and the city uses Habitat. And the reason for the, the challenge of selecting a CHODO or recruiting a CHODO is because of these requirements. They do have to be certified every year and meet these requirements, such as they have to maintain a nonprofit status, have the capacity to service the developer. They have to meet, have a certain board composition, such as at least one-third of the board must be low to moderate income. And they must have a purpose of providing affordable housing. And that must be evident in their bylaws, articles in corporation. So, just to give you an idea that there are some strict guidelines that a nonprofit must meet in order to even become a CHODO. Now, to address the question of what is considered affordable housing. Now, this is just a, a general rule of thumb, but HUD has established this, established this. Basically, housing costs that does not exceed thirty percent of a household income is considered affordable. Okay? So, that's just a rule of thumb that HUD uses. And just to give you an idea of the income limits that a tenant will be required to meet in order to be eligible for housing this type of project. For instance, a three, a person of, with a household size of three, their total household income cannot exceed thirty-eight thousand five hundred fifty a year. Now, the rent limits, of course, there are rent limits. For instance, for bedroom size of three, the total rent plus utilities cannot exceed one thousand two hundred forty-six. But just because you do have this established rent limit, the landlord cannot say, well, I'm gonna charge the tenant nine hundred dollars a month, because that's within the rent limit. We know that that's still not affordable, affordable to most of our clients. So, therefore, there are, there is a calculation that the developer will have to use to determine what that tenant will be paying for that unit. So, the rent will be determined based on either thirty percent of their adjusted monthly income, which is their gross income minus any deductions, such as if they have dependents, if they have a disability, or if they're elderly, or ten percent of their monthly gross income. So, it's the higher of those two, minus the utility allowance, which is established by the housing authority. So, in this example, a household of three with an annual gross income of thirty-five thousand a year will be paying six hundred ninety-three dollars for rent. Okay? That's just to give you an example. Of course, that can vary. Utility allowance, like I said, that's established by the housing authority, and it varies from unit to unit. So, for Kingdom's proposed project, they are proposing to develop two townhouse, townhouse-style units. And I provided information on past projects that they've developed and within the last few years. And so, the price, the cost per unit, square footage, is still in line with the range that has been provided based on the information that I've obtained from other general licensed contractors, as well as other sources that I've used. And I just want to make, I think that during the agenda session meeting, I indicated it was twelve hundred square feet. There's, the two units, square footage is twelve ninety-five and thirteen twelve, which, which averages out to about ninety-five per square footage. And so, just wanna emphasize the overall purpose of this partnership is to just make sure that we provide decent, quality housing for our target population, for our low-income families. And to make sure that we erase the stigma that low-income families don't deserve quality, decent, affordable housing. Are there any questions so far?
Mr. Keith?
Do I challenge you, Madam Chair? Do I challenge you?
Mr. Keith has a way.
I, I don't, I don't think anybody is, is under the impression that we are not trying to provide affordable housing to people. My, my only concern came from the CHODO process. I mean, basically, there's one.
Right.
Okay? I mean, that's not much of an RFP, but regardless of all that, the other part that I had was, you're comparing a townhouse to a single-family housing and saying that they're comparable. And in the building, I mean, there, there's a lot of advantages to building a townhouse with a duplex. There, there's a lot of cost savings that go. Where my concern had come in is, where did the number, where did the number come in of a hundred and twenty-three thousand per unit? Or two hundred and fifty for the, how did that number come about?
Well, that was prepared by the developer. That's their construction budget. And of course, that's based on their average cost per unit, based on their past projects and what the area...
Okay. Well, according to Zillow, the average house in, in Cumberland County is a hundred and ten thousand. And that's, you know, these are both more than that, as we go through. But I guess the process with the CHODO, just so I can get this right in my head, they're receiving, the CHODO is receiving money to build the buildings. But then the CHODO actually is able to collect the rents personally from the tenant.
That's correct.
So, what's the investment of the CHODO?
What they're, again, this is, they're a nonprofit, so they're not in the business of making a profit. They're in the business of developing affordable housing. And those, the income that they receive have to go back into the programs.
What are the programs?
Well, continued developing projects, similar projects, their operating costs.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
Well, and I guess mine is, this was, this was a long read. But part of the sales of the proceeds, the grantee gets to keep some.
Right.
It comes back, thirty percent comes back to the grantee, seventy percent goes to the CHODO. So, there is, and then the CHODO is supposed to reinvest theirs within a twenty-four-month period. I mean, this was a long read on this. I mean, it was, it was, it was difficult. The, the issue I have, though, is that when you were talking about the rent, the CHODO didn't get to set the rent. The county does. I mean, it's still, that's what's in here.
Right, right, right. And that is the example that we provide.
Okay, so, the metrics that we're using on the rent is what we've decided to do. And then any, and then it's supposed to be yearly, they're supposed to come back, and we're supposed to implement. Do we have that process in place?
Yes.
Do we have all of that, that paperwork?
Yes, we monitor them annually, and that's when we get, obtain that information.
Yeah, 'cause the only reason I, you know, it's, it's nothing worse than getting somebody into a house and they can't stay.
Right.
So, when I was asking, that's what I'm saying, how many of these folk, once they get in there, are able to continue to afford, you know, six eighty-three? You know, that'd be a pretty good chunk of money to be able to talk about. I'm talking about affordable housing. I thought it was a little bit less than, than six eighty-three. That's a...
Well, it depends on their income.
Well, I understand. I mean, it's just, that, that tends to be, you know, who chooses the tenant? How do we get to the tenant?
Well, they have to have a tenant selection criteria, a waitlist. They just can't pick and choose. They have to follow their tenant selection criteria.
I just wondered, 'cause you can get the ones with the higher income, which adds up your rent payment, as opposed to the poor little guy down here at the bottom, who can't afford that, but you're gonna get less rent because of the formula that we use.
Right, right.
And so, are we monitoring that?
Yes, yes, sir.
And we've got that, and we've got the numbers to be able to do all of that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's all.
They're monitored on an annual basis.
I got you.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you.
Mr. Evans had a question?
No, I, I just had to comment, and I was sitting here just listening to the debate. And this, this board, we have issues when it come to helping people that aren't as fortunate as office. We discussed this for hours on and hours on about affordable housing. But we don't have that much discussion when it come to other items that others are interested in, like museums and stadiums and things of that nature. And we know that we need affordable housing here. And I don't know why we have such a hard time, a hard time with issues like that. It concerns me.
I had, well, I had to come here. I wanted to make, I'm gonna make it, I've got two more lights now. But every so often, and the, the questions come up in cycles, every so many years, we seem to have questions. I can remember a field trip where we went out and actually looked at the property, walked through the property. through the property, and heard plans for additional affordable housing at the, at that site. I could also remember a time when we had no one to bid on it, who wanted to build affordable housing. So you're right. And Mr. Faircloth, which one did I see first?
Mr. Faircloth.
Mr. Faircloth, then Mr. Evans.
I don't really care what order I go in, but to address Mr. Evans's comment, this is not an issue that, that I'm taking with anybody who is seeking affordable housing, has nothing to do with that. What, what my concern really was in the beginning was the lack of bidders, I guess you could say, or the lack, the lack of a population that we can choose from to provide this affordable housing. You know, it's not, it's not who's, the tenant is who the landlord is. And, and I'm guessing it's, it's for the reason that, that it's, it's a very difficult thing to make any money on, and, and of course, if you're a nonprofit, you're not supposed to be worried about it, but you gotta, you gotta have some sustaining money, and somebody's getting paid salaries and things of that nature. And, and I guess it leads me to the question of what kind of financial information do we ask of the vendor? Do we get, do we get financial statements? Do we get copies?
Yes, we get the financial statements, their past audits.
All that stuff is on file for public.
Yes, sir, and this, yes, sir. It, it has to be submitted on, when we do the certification.
Okay.
Yeah, for the Chodo.
And mine's not, mine's not even about the Chodo. I know Kingdom, I know the board members. Mine was just to make sure that it's affordable housing, to make sure that those people who need it the most have the grandest opportunity to be able to get in there. So mine's not one of, of trying to determine any of that. I think that there's not enough affordable housing anywhere in the country, much less here in Cumberland County, and that this organization does a good job on that. But I just wanted to make sure that those that were leased among us were the ones who were going to enjoy the benefit of this, as opposed to looking at it any kind of other way. So.
All right. We have had healthy discussions at two meetings about this item. What is your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second. You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number five are your nominations.
The nominations for?
The Transportation Advisory Board.
Transportation Advisory Board. There are four vacancies.
Madam Chair, the county, I would, the transportation has four vacancies. The county DS Director or Designee, Christian B. O. N. O. Y. E. R., the Large Representative, Mike Rutan, R. U. T. A. N., and Dorothy Harris. And the Transportation Advisory Board recommends Veronica Pierce.
Okay. Are there other nominations? If not, we'll go to?
No, item six, appointments.
Item six. Mr. Faircloth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we have an equal number of nominees for the positions available and for the seniors, Citizens Advisory Commission, I move that we appoint Donald Bennett Senior.
Second.
All right. Are we doing them separate or together?
You can do all of them, how do you want to do it?
Okay, I'll continue then. And for the Cumberland County Workforce Development Board, we have five vacancies, we have five nominees who are all representatives of business, and Joey Miller is a reappointment, Jesse Brayboy Jr.'s a reappointment, Dina Simcox is a reappointment, Sherry Turner and Charles is a, is a reappointment.
Chaz.
And Chaz, Chaz, Chase Banks, Sampson is a new appointment. And I would move that we appoint these representatives of the Cumberland County Workforce Board.
Second.
All right. Was there a motion?
In a second.
In a second, those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you. I know next item is closed session, but I would like for the, favor Cumberland Youth Council members to come forward to the podium and make a statement of some kind. Did you learn anything?
Um, yes, ma'am, I've never been to one, so it was a great opportunity for me to listen in and see how it operates and works, and meet some new friendly faces around here. I enjoyed the time, and I thank you for letting me come here.
Thank you for coming.
I as well want to say thank you. It was nice to see other friendly faces, meet new commissioners, well, learn new commissioners, and also to learn and sit in on what's actually going on in the county.
Thank you so much for joining us. We will not hold you while we go into closed session. We appreciate your attendance. I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session for a, for a personnel matter. I don't have the reference.
I think I do. I think it's one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A six.
That's it, that's correct.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We're in close.
Welcome to Cumberland Update, your source for information about Cumberland County news and events. I'm your host, Geneve Mankle. At any given time, there could be between 800 and 900 children in foster care in Cumberland County. There is a vital need for foster parents in our community. Foster care is a temporary living arrangement for children who must be removed from their homes for their safety and protection. Foster parents not only provide a safe home for children, but provide love, support, and guidance. There are some misconceptions about being a foster parent. You don't have to be married to foster, you don't have to be wealthy, and you don't have to own your own home. The requirements to become a foster parent are fairly simple. You must be a Cumberland County resident, must be 21 years old or older, be financially stable, and have adequate space in your home to support the child. If you or someone you know is interested in making a difference in the life of a child, the first step is to attend a foster parent information session. These meetings are held the third Thursday of each month at noon and then again at 6:30 PM. The meetings are held in the first floor conference room of the DSS building at 1225 Ramsey Street. For more information, call 910-677-2541. On February 21st, the State Board of Elections unanimously voted to hold a new election in the 9th Congressional District. Cumberland County, which resides in a portion of the district, will hold a primary election May 14th and a general election September 10th. If a second primary is needed, the second primary will be September 10th and the general election will be held November 5th. The only residents eligible to vote in the primary election are those who are registered as Republican or unaffiliated in the 9th Congressional District. For more information about the election, call the Cumberland County Board of Elections office at 910-678-7738, or visit their webpage at co.cumberland.nc.us/elections. The Cumberland County Public Health Department will be reopening its baby store on May 17th. The store is located in the Public Health Center at 1235 Ramsey Street. The store is an incentive-based prenatal health promotion program that aims to create healthy moms and healthy babies while also combating low birth weights and infant mortality rates in Cumberland County. Health department clients can earn baby bucks by attending their prenatal care appointments and participating in health education classes such as smoking cessation, childbirth and parenting classes, breastfeeding classes, and others. Once bucks are earned, they can be used at the baby store to purchase items such as diapers, baby wipes, car seats, and more. The baby store program helps expectant moms and families by providing opportunities to support the healthy development of their babies. If you would like more information about the baby store, call the Health Education Division at 910-433-3890. The Cumberland County Library and Information Center is proud to participate in the North Carolina Science Festival in April. All eight library branches will offer programming that celebrates science, technology, engineering, and math. Through hands-on activities, science talks, lab tours, nature experiences, exhibits, and performances, the festival engages a wide range of public audiences while inspiring future generations. For specific programs, dates, and times, visit the event calendar on the library's website. The library will also be participating in the Southeastern Regional North Carolina Poetry Festival. The festival is a four-day event that takes place in Fayetteville. This festival will have workshops, open mics, themed events, and more. Headquarters Library will host a creative writing workshop and open mic night on April 24th from 5:30 to 7:45 PM. For a full list of poetry festival activities, visit the library's Facebook page. A key component for creating a luscious yard or garden is pollinators. During the "Meet Your Pollinators" class, you'll discover ways to attract, support, and manage pollinating insects. The class will be held May 2nd from noon to 1:30 PM. Registration and the $10 fee are due by April 26th. Did you know making homemade yogurt is a pretty simple process? If you want to learn how to make this healthy treat at home with just a few ingredients, plan to attend the yogurt-making class. The class will be held May 9th from 10 AM to noon. Registration and the $10 fee are due by May 3rd. These classes are part of the Cooperative Extension's Better Living Series and are offered at the Extension Office at 301 East Mountain Drive. For more information or to register, call 910-321-6860, or visit cumberlandces.ncsu.edu. The Cumberland County Department of Social Services held the March to Work Job Fair on March 20th at the Crown Expo Center. We take a look back at the 20th Annual Event.
The Crown Expo Center just hosted its 20th Annual Cumberland County Department of Social Services March to Work Job Fair, where job seekers from surrounding areas were given the opportunity to meet employers, hand out resumes, and apply for jobs. An official ribbon-cutting ceremony was held in celebration of two decades of providing career opportunities to Cumberland County citizens. One of the events directors believes that the job fair is just one of many opportunities the Department of Social Services provides to assist citizens and their families.
We are here to strengthen individuals and families, and this is just one way that we do that.
About 100 employers representing a variety of industries were present at the fair, including education, customer service, government, distribution, food service, healthcare, retail, and more. The Internet Job Cafe hosted by the Cumberland County Public Library and Information Center was available for job seekers to submit online applications during the event. One worker explained how the additional technology adds to the growing career fair.
I believe that it offers applicants an opportunity to use technology to look for work and to be educated about how that technology helps them to find work, and it gives them an opportunity maybe to use it when they otherwise may not have, and they get to see what's available for them.
The Cumberland County NC Works Career Center provides staff and services to help job seekers with resume review, NC Works registration, veteran services, and career training services and information. The job fair is presented in partnership with the Cumberland County Public Library and Information Center, NC Works Career Center, City of Fayetteville, Fayetteville Technical Community College, Public Works Commission, Beasley Media Group, Top Ear Plus, Partys, and McDonald's.
Thank you for watching this edition of Cumberland Update. If you would like more information about your county government, like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, or visit our website. Cumberland County, caring, committed community. The Graves Creek Ruritan Club in Cumberland County held a ribbon-cutting ceremony April 5th for new playground equipment at Hall Park, which is in the Graves Creek community. Hall Park is owned by the Ruritan Club and operates under a partnership with Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation. The playground project was funded with a $25,000 donation to the Ruritan Club from Comore's and matching recreation dollars from Cumberland County. The new playground joins other amenities at the park, which includes ball fields, concessions, and picnic shelters. Ruritan Club Vice President Helen Brockett, Cumberland County Commissioner Glenn Adams, North Carolina Representative John Soka of District 45, and Comore's plant manager Brian Long participated in the ceremony and ribbon cutting. Anyone who's interested in using the new playground equipment can visit Hall Park at 6060 Hall Park Road in Graves Creek.
I'm Jeanette Council, Chair of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, and I want to welcome the official ceremony marking the renaming of the Graves Creek Center in the memory of the late John Dove Powne. I can think of no greater tribute to him and the work that he has done all of these years than to give a man a tangible symbol for him and his family for all of the work that he has done in the community and which he loved so much. Thank you.
Please sign the posting of the colors by the Cumberland County Emergency Services Honor Guard, and then remain standing for the invocation by the Reverend Selvin Lindo, who is the pastor of Evans Metropolitan AME Zion Church.
Dear gracious and almighty God, we first come to invoke your presence at this day, a day with reasonable health and strength, that we are able to assemble ourselves to honor a fallen patriot, John Dove Powne, affectionately known as J.D. Thank you, dear Lord, for his life and his legacy in touching the hearts and the minds of the official that has made this day and this occasion possible. Your blessings I ask upon this assembly, especially for the family and friends who stand proud of a lifetime achievement of a great man. Now, Lord, let us all, and what we do today, be done to your glory and to thine honor. This is my offer to reprieve up, in the mighty name of Jesus the Christ. May we all say amen.
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
A beautiful spring morning is an appropriate time to rename this recreation center because sports and activities of all kinds begin to kick into high gear. Grace Creek is the heart of a thriving spirited community where families and neighbors live, work, and play side by side. It's the kind of community a lot of people would love to call home, and every time we get ready to re-district or change the way that something is zoned, we always hear from you, because you want to keep it as it is, a great place to live and work. J.D. Pone passed away, Mr. Pone, it will be three years, April 6th, I believe. So the legacy and footprint that he left on this community live with us, and it is appropriate that we honor him at this time. He was a husband, a father, a brother, a veteran, a firefighter, a chaplain, a church member, a public servant, a volunteer, but most importantly, he would call you friend. Grace Creek and this county are better served because of his tireless commitment. He was not only a leader, but he was a person who rolled up his sleeves and he went to work to help all of the organizations that make life great for all of us. He was a longtime Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. He was Deputy Chief of the Grace Creek Fire Department, and he served as Chaplain of the Fire Chiefs Association. He had a special passion for parks and recreation, and to the family of Mr. Pone, raise your hand, family. Didn't recognize you all. Raise your hand, thank you. Thank you for supporting him and allowing him to make Cumberland County a great place in which to live and work, because without your support, he wouldn't have been able to complete all of the community tasks that he did.
It's an honor to be a part of this ceremony today. I can tell you that this Grace Creek community has become home to my family and myself. I was delighted when Deja Collin asked me to speak on behalf of the Grace Creek community, thinking that most of you here are the rock of the community. My family moved here from, we're native Tennesseans, don't hold that against us. When we first moved here, someone said, "Okay, who do you root for in sports?" And I went, "Well, we're from Tennessee," and he said, "You need to change your colors." Well, going on 33 years of living in this community, I can say that we either go Carolina blue, the Duke dark blue, the state red, and whoever's winning, we're with them. The sporting and athletics in the community has meant so much to us. Also, looking at the communities, when we had the opportunity to move here with my husband when he took his position with USAA, we didn't want to live near the Army Base, we wanted to live in the community because we're just home folks. I'm originally from Fayetteville, Tennessee, and the same Lafayette that came through here, across one of our bridges too. So we have a lot of community to share with you through the legacy of Lafayette that came through. We came in tow with a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and then a few years later had number three daughter. They were welcomed here, all three of them had Ms. Mary Dean Pone in school over at Grace Creek there. And then we got to know the entire Pone family. They welcomed us, made us feel a part of this community, and it is home for us now. And thinking on Mr. J.D., this community is definitely better because of him, and as a rock of our community. J.D. was an integral part of moving this community and developing and improving the interest and benefit of providing athletic opportunities for the children of our future. As a Ruotan, we know this well. The park at Hall Park was graced by his coaching and his presence, and his children play and ball there as mine were. He never missed an opportunity to answer to a call to benefit any need. As a man of God, when the calling came, whom shall I send? He never hesitated to say, "Send me," and this community is glad he did. It is definitely appropriate, I'm sorry I get emotional, to name this facility in his memory and an honor, the John Dove J.D. Pone Recreational Center.
And now, Mr. Pone's daughter, Deja Pone Davis, will provide remarks on behalf of the Pone family, and then she will be followed by her husband, the Reverend James E. Davis, who will provide our benediction.
There's an old song that says, "May the work that I've done speak for me." And as I look around today, it's evident that the life that my father lived and the work that he did has not only spoken for him, but it continues to speak. Today, we pause to simply say thank you. Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge, to recognize, and to honor a man who spent his life serving. A man who worked tirelessly to ensure that the Grace Creek community was not overlooked and that we had access to the same programming and opportunities as other areas in Cumberland County. That was important to him. My father's work in this community started long before this recreation center was ever built or even thought of. What we see today is a result of many conversations, meetings, disagreements, compromises, and countless hours of planning and implementation. It is a representation of what my father envisioned, not only for his children and grandchildren, but for the community that he grew up in and that he loved. He did a lot of work behind the scenes, and he was a voice for this community in boardrooms and in settings that many people will never even know that he was in, yet there he was, making sure that Grace Creek was not left out. Then he would come back to his community, and he would put in work. He was invested in the change that he wanted to see in Grace Creek. There's a scripture in the Bible that says, "Whatever a man soweth, so shall he reap." John D. Pone Sr., known affectionately to most as J.D., sowed a lot into his community, his church, and into a legacy that will carry on throughout generations. Today, although he is not here physically to witness the reaping, his presence is definitely felt and it is visible. There are former players here who learned from Daddy right here in this very gym that my brother and I also played in. There are teammates that played along with my brother, my sister, and I who are here today. We grew up playing ball together and learned lessons about friendship, commitment, and teamwork along the way. Many of those lessons have stuck with us, and we continue to use them in our adult lives. Some of us have returned to this community and continue the work and legacy of Grace Creek as coaches, members of the PTA, volunteering in any way that we can to continue the legacy that my dad helped to start. Most importantly for me today, there are friends and teammates and coaches of his grandchildren here. Many of them have no idea who J.D. Pone was or why his name is even up on that building, yet they're able to enjoy sports and other activities in a building and through programming that he and others worked hard to bring to this community. This is what Daddy wanted for Grace Creek. Our family is honored and humbled to be here today, celebrating the legacy of a man that we are proud to call husband, daddy, granddaddy, brother, uncle, cousin, coach, and friend. The life he lived still speaks and will now forever speak through what is done in and through this great facility, the John Dove J.D. Pone Recreation Center.
What a joy it is to stand here today in front of everybody to dedicate this wonderful building in the name of my father-in-law. I hope that as we leave this place, that we can understand that there's a certain type of unique fundamental spirit that rests within my father-in-law. That first thing is community. Look at someone and say, "Community." Community is simply people who learn together, love together, but most of all, people who grow together. Another one of those fundamental spirits would be family. Look at someone and say, "Family." Those who unconditionally we can't choose, but they are in our family. But with that, we're there through the great times, we're there through the tough times, but most of all, we're just simply there. Last spirit that he has, that spirit of faith. Look at someone and say, "Faith." Faith is very simple. It's felt not touched. It's seen but not boastful, and it's something that is lived out, also it lives within. These were the three things that my father-in-law's spirit really resonated within us and within his family. Let us pray. We thank you for what our ears have heard, what our eyes have seen. Now, as we gather together many people to dedicate this building to this community, we thank you most of all, God, because you were here with us. So now, as we depart from this place, allow the spirit to still rest here in community, in family, and in faith. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Hi, I'm Elaine Smith. I'm the Director at Cumberland County Animal Control. And spring means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, but here to us at Animal Control, what it means is kitten season. So, a female cat like this girl he-